Good afternoon, members of council and staff and members of the public who are with us. Welcome to Special Committee of the Whole Meeting for November 15th, 2022. We'd like to acknowledge we are meeting here in Casputwick, one of the seven districts of Mingmoggi, homeland of the Migma people. We acknowledge the treaties of peace and friendship and we thank the Migma people for their generosity in sharing their homeland with us. We are all treaty people. And could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Thank you, Counselor Elliott and Counselor Butler. Second that, are there any additions? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, and that is passed. And being a special committee as a whole, there are no minutes, but we do have public input and anybody who would like to speak, who is a member of the public. You, those here know the drill. You have three minutes to speak and you may return once more for one minute if there are no other people here to speak. But any, is there anybody online who wishes to speak?
No, there isn't.
Isn't, and in the gallery? Okay, good. Not necessarily good, but thank you. That moves us to, we have a one, this is a one item meeting and new business, business licensing, short-term rentals and single-room occupancies, and I will turn this over to Director Lake and Lindsay Slade.
Just, Mike, is the screen being shared right now? I just want to make sure.
It is.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So, we've done quite a bit of work on this file over the last, it's been basically a year since the planning committee motions, but I'm going to step you through fairly high level. We're not going to get into into the nitty-gritty of all of the what we heard reports. Those are there for council's information and and the benefit of council in making a decision here, but this work really arose out of the housing crisis and work we were bringing forward to Planning Committee on some options through 2021 on what we were calling low-hanging fruit. I put that in quotes because I had kind of thought these single-room occupancies and short-term rentals were low-hanging fruit, but they've turned out to be much more complicated than we figured. The other issues that were brought forward at that time were around our one and building height. Just at the beginning here, we should ground ourselves in the fact that 53% of our households and Woolfill are rentals. So that's a bit abnormal and you know, that's obviously related to the presence of the university. And a lot of this work has been completely entwined with the community harmony work that that we're doing and other files that we have. We've had different discussions around the behavior of individuals and some of the challenges we have around doing land use planning with that sort of hanging over us, I guess. It can be very challenging. We've had all kinds of different discussions around that. So also a part of this work has been complaints received around single-room occupancies, around parking, minimum property standards, noise and nuisance. So just sort of for the record, I guess, this business license piece, we had drafted a business licensing bylaw which is with a fairly broad scope. And the intent of this bylaw was really around traditional businesses. So the businesses on our main street, the ones that are members of the Woolfill Business Development Corporation and some of that was really being driven by just an inability to really know year over year, who exactly is coming and going and having a little more concrete tool to have people check in with the town when they're opening a business. If they're not having a development permit, we've had, we've had some trouble year over year. And we do have a really good inventory now and with our website, the bylaw was really drafted around that. The rental side of it had been discussed since 2015, 16, the residential rental business bylaw. So part of that additional consultation analysis was really about expanding it into that and trying to bring the two together. With the planning committee, just as I said, there was two motions around around housing that the planning committee had put forward. One was the short-term rentals and the single-room occupancies and the other one was around building height. We, we are actually going to be dealing with building height in some capacity with the East End. And this was broken up into two motions at council in October of last year. And so we went out and started to do engagement and to be honest, we started mostly just with in our minds wanting to reach out to landlords. Landlord relations for the last three or four years has been something on our work plan and trying to talk, talk that out, work through issues. And so we started into that and quickly realized that we also need to bring in the tenants and we also need to round that out with homeowners and and folks in the neighborhood group that, I mean, to be fair, we've been talking to through the Good Neighbors Group, but there'd been a bit of a gap there. So we did a number of things, all focused around these specific topics, but a number of other topics obviously came up, as you can see, if you've gone through all of the material. This is not meant to be statistically significant in any way. This is a snapshot of perspectives and it was really a process of people who wanted to opt in. And it's really for the benefit of council to hear what people's perspectives are and bring out some people that that maybe wouldn't regularly be engaging with council. But it's certainly, you know, of a town of 5,000, the return rate and the number of people that have engaged in this is nowhere near that. So as part of this, we we did interviews, Lindsay did interviews, so hats off to Lindsay for the substantial amount of time she put into that. And went through questions on the rental business bylaw, short-term rentals and the other issues. And we did summarize these in sort of the three buckets of people's perspectives. And again, this relates to some of these other ongoing projects. So the, we did 36 interviews, 14 landlords, 12 homeowners and nine tenants. There was also a Woolfield Bloom survey, which you can see with the majority of that was responded to by tenants. And it's kind of hard to go through a highlight reel of all of the responses here. But I think it's fair to say that a lot of the perspectives were sort of polarized depending on one's experience. So I think that's consistent throughout the different, the different areas that we were asking people about. Just, just more of a reminder, I know council knows this, but for those maybe in the audience or watching online, there's a number of initiatives that are ongoing and existing bylaws that sort of contribute to this overall exercise of community harmony, as we're calling it. So we have a recently adopted land use bylaw. We have a complement of building and fire staff and just on the fire side, we are sort of in a process of staffing up and training around that side of things. We have a nuisance party bylaw, minimum property standards bylaw, and that's with our compliance staff for the most part. Community alcohol strategy has just been completed. The RCMP and the review around that, the noise bylaw. All of the community dialogue that's sort of ongoing, whether that's formal or informal. I mean, I hope this contributes to that, but I just put in brackets there that, you know, the good neighbors being such a big contributor to that. The compliance staff that we have work with Acadia and I think an important piece here is just some of the new GIS tools that we're trying to use to keep track of these things and hopefully can roll out some really user-friendly summaries of this data for council and for our management team, especially it's really helpful to see things summarized. We should say that we, we have limited control over certain issues that were brought up. So the Residential Tenancies Act, the town doesn't really play a part in that, but it's certainly a critical part of, part of the landlord discussions that came up. The provincial drinking age and obviously with Acadia. But we do have, you know, other controls around land use, around things like lounge operating hours and our bylaws that I mentioned and the way that we approach compliance and the capacity around that. So just generalizing some of the compliance and when Blair McMurtry was here, he did work out of my office. So I have some level of familiarity around this and a bit of history before Kayden got here, but this is really generalized, but I think these are the areas of town where properties are being responded to for the most part. We have some recent GIS sort of summaries of data around the tracking that we're doing more recently and it sort of trends the same as we figured and it depends on the year, but I think the properties move around. I think the experience would be consistent among this group. I've had conversations with different people around that. But I don't want to say definitively what the number is, but it's probably between 10 and 20, depending on the year of what we would have like really repeat offenders and things that we're going out and really chasing around. You know, this, it is important to sort of connect that compliance piece with the way that we're regulating land use. So this is our existing zoning and just generally those areas and obviously they're right next to the university. And they all have certain zoning categories where certain types of housing, the single-room occupancy in particular is pretty prevalent in these areas. So I'm just going to go through the different areas of focus and sort of, I'm really going to get down to the conclusion at this point and some of the rationale around it. So with the residential rental business bylaw, we're not recommending in this report to move forward with that and a big part of that is just around the scale of the project. parsing it out to just the single-room occupancies is really what we did with our land use bylaw. And so with our land use bylaw, we had this RRBB project sort of really drafted almost in in completion with Photon at the time, I think it was 2018. And we took all that work and we actually put it in our land use bylaw, created a new land use category called single-room occupancy. So it's a more specific rental classification. And so we've, we have parsed that, you know, over 1,000 rental properties down. And we have a set of regulations around that, which I'll show. But again, a lot of those have been in existence for many years. And, you know, we have open files on a lot of these as well. So a lot of that comes down to capacity, frankly. The last point, I think I've already talked about that, but it's just, there really is a limited amount of real, I'm saying problem properties. Or things where our compliance staff are spending a lot of time, but it's not, you know, it's not 200 properties. The other piece that I think that's important just to highlight here is some of the GIS work that we've been doing. So we invested in GIS enterprise software, which is GIS stands for geographic information system. So it allows us to take data and spatially map it and show where things are. So we're working on different applications that internally we use a lot. So a permitting application, we've been working on that. Both my, the planning department and engineering uses this stuff heavily. But we also do things like parking counts, tracking compliance, locating assets on the ground, things like excavation reports. It's all really useful and we're starting, I think, to sort of integrate some of that at our fingertips. And this is what I mean by some of these dashboards. It's a little grainy, the image, but these, these are really just summaries and some high-level points for decision-makers. You can see the one on the top right around parking. Trying to work on something around that. Fire inspectors have been inputting all the inspections and and sort of cleaning up the sort of long history of fits and starts around fire inspections in town. And we have others that that are ongoing. We haven't had that much time really to work with this, so there will hopefully be ongoing updates around these things. But as far as having a database and knowing where things are, we do have really powerful tools to do that. And I say that for the most part, we do know where things are. This is just a snapshot of compliance. These are just individual, you know, incidents of compliance that that would be entered into the database and you can sort these and search for different things. There is a related recommendation, which is the motion that's in front of you with this report. And that's that we continue to pursue this business licensing bylaw. So we've held heart of this and I've been working with the WBDC around this. Certainly I've brought it up at meetings and they, they basically agree that it's high time. We kind of have a tool. Not to be punitive towards businesses about anything, but it's really like, if we're going to put them on our website, it's a really nice entry point. And we can track that over time. The other part would be around encouraging landlords to start some type of association or organized group. You know, not so dissimilar to the WBDC. I would go as far as saying that landlords and rental businesses are the biggest business in town. So it really would be in their best interest to do that. We've had a few meetings that Mr. Rafi, who's here now, organized amongst a number of landlords, which I thought were, were positive to have some informal discussion. Um, so I'll go into the next issue that we talked about in in detail. So the short-term rentals, this is sort of head spinning in some ways, but I'll try to summarize this. So we're not recommending any changes to what we have in the land use bylaw right now. A lot of that is because we didn't get much response and it's hard for us to make a recommendation without really knowing who's on the ground and what is going on. We certainly made efforts to. I did put fees, question mark, because I do think that's probably something that we should do at some point. And that's part of kind of leveling the playing field, I would say. But right now I think we have a decent framework. This is what's in our land use bylaw now. When we adopted this, I thought we had brought in what was kind of best practice at the time. So the intent was really around owner occupied. Still allowing people that are renting a home to do this, but it would still be their primary residence. There's some other provisions there, but those, those were the main pieces. We know that that's not happening. But we've been monitoring this since 2001. We know there's around 50 in town. That's not including like the micro boutique and some of the more commercial operations. We've sent the regulations around with tax bills. We created a page, a Bloom's page. We even made an Airbnb account and we're kicked off of Airbnb because we tried to contact people directly through Airbnb. Some of the fun that Lindsay gets to have. And we've over, between Marcia and and work that Lindsay's done, we've enforced short-term rentals in the R1 zone. That, that one's very black and white. So we have done that and we've even done that very recently. But at the end of the day, none of register with the town. The intent here is that a short-term rental would come in and get a development permit. Right? And this is, you know, we can link the fees to that. They would come in and show us these things and we would have a discussion with them and we would understand both where all these are and how many there are in town and be able to, you know, bring you, I think, a more informed recommendation. And that's really the gap right now is that we haven't been able to have those conversations with the, with the owners. As I say, we have tried to reach out and I think we'll, we'll continue to do that. And perhaps there's a, there's a recommendation coming. The other thing that is ongoing is the province is looking to bring a registry in, similar to what they used to have. We're not clear on exactly what that's going to entail. So maybe we can bring more information back when the province comes out with more and we can better sort of deal with this. But again, if you look through the material around the engagement, there's a lot of mixed opinions on this issue. So it's, it may sound like we're going both ways on this, but that is the reality of it. I think we landed in a good place with our land use bylaw and the gap is really capacity and going and chasing properties and trying to find them. I'll keep moving along and then this is, this is the last one. So, single-room occupancies, so a home that has more than three bedrooms for rent is the simple explanation of what this is. Again, we, we really just adopted regulations around this. So we created a separate land use category for this. We haven't been able to work with it that much, but I think it's kind of unequivocal that the, the main affordable housing in Woolfield right now is by the room rental. So I, and I could, I would be, I would be willing to be wrong on that, but I'm fairly certain that I'm and that I'm right, that that is probably the cheapest way to find accommodation in Woolfield. We have a number of open fire inspections and compliance files on some of these, so that is ongoing. We do get complaints about some of these properties. Often, single-room occupancies are also the properties that I alluded to at the beginning that are sort of one of those moving quote-unquote problem properties. And then the other part of this was a real big focus of our land use bylaw was to create smaller units in town. So to try to allow people to break up some of these eight, nine-bedroom units into things that are more manageable. Those were informed with conversation with people like John McKay that have done that type of project and have seen, you know, market improvement in, in the behavior side. So this is what's in our land use bylaw now. And again, some of this is going out seeking compliance. So we, as I say, are doing that actively with some properties. There were a maximum number corresponding to underlying zones that we had worked through as part of our plan review as well. And then there's additional parking requirements within, within this as well. Yeah, I think this is the last slide. So this, this is probably the theme that runs throughout this report is there's really a question around level of service. I have limited staff and Aaron's compliance folks also are, are limited and we're reacting to certain things and then there's certain files that probably should have a more proactive approach. So I think there's discussions within the budget around how and where that lands. I think you can tell with just the amount that went into this report and the amount of conversation, it is essentially occupied most of Lindsay's time for the last few months. So there's also a question of how do we want to be spending our time, particularly when, you know, we have some other fairly substantial files on the go in, in the planning department anyway. So yeah, this is the, the motion that is there and I would just note that we'd bring back a separate RFD and, and go through that bylaw. And go through that bylaw with you, just because you haven't seen it for quite some time. I wanted to kind of separate that from today's discussion because I think it's, it's kind of separate. But yeah, that's, I think that's all for the presentation. And turn it back to you.
I wonder if we want, so I'm a little confused as to which motions we have because I don't have a motions list, but I wonder if we first want to have questions and comments by subject area. So the first, does that make, that make sense? So the first one was the business, the business licensing, I'm looking at and not residential rental. So they, there is, there is a emotion, I think, if they're not related to the traditional business licensing to proceed with that.
Correct. We can put that up on the screen. That's the only motion that we have for all three.
Okay, well, why don't we tackle that one first? And if, does anyone from council have a question or comment on that? Counselor McKay?
Is that the very last of our, that is the bylaw that's at the very back of it or the draft? Very last few pages, town of Woolfield bylaw?
Yes.
109 business license bylaw?
Yes.
So it would be to adopt that in essence. Okay.
I would just say that it would just be to move that forward. So we would continue. I think there's a bit of work that needs to be done on that, but I think it's a good draft.
And is to direct staff to continue to work on.
Continue to work on it. We would have to go through a bylaw adoption process. You would do a first reading, a public hearing, that process.
But this is in essence what you're going for. Okay. I just wanted to clarify. So my question, I think this is good. I think this has been a long time coming. I think it will be helpful for the WBDC because they've been over the years have had a hard time figuring out who comes and goes and, and so we, so I think this is great. I only one question. I guess we're going to further work on it. My only question was on accessibility on it and do we, they will be mandated by 2030 to have accessibility. So should there be something that says we'll follow the accessibility app when issuing this license? Business licensing? I'm not sure how that fits, but if we're, we're going to continue to work, I'm in favor of that with maybe thinking about how that might work together.
I guess just in response to that, if I may, the business owner may not be the building owner.
No.
So.
Yeah, how does that work together? I'm not sure, but yeah, I don't know either, but I was wondering how, and if they rent, do they, I don't know how that works.
I think that Jen would know better, but we did talk about this yesterday and I, I understand that the requirements would fall to the building, the owner of the building, not the.
Unless they were the same people.
Yes.
I could bring back more information on that though. I took a note there, yeah.
Deputy Mayor, you had. I just wanted a question. Would it be helpful? And I'm thinking of the WBDC because one of the, the challenges has been to identify the types of businesses, you know, some are working from home. They're not, they're not storefronts. Their whole range of, of businesses that need to be registered. Would it help to identify within the, that there's a, a range of businesses, types of businesses that were, so that people know that this isn't just storefronts, I guess, is what I.
It could, yeah.
Because that, that is one of the things that WBDC has been struggling with in terms of getting a list of who, you know, non COVID has created all sorts of, has redefined businesses in many ways beyond these traditional storefronts. So how do we capture those changes?
I think a big part of it is the ones that are bricks and mortar and are paying into the WBDC. I think there's another project of really trying to capture our home-based businesses and also having our WBDC have some type of relationship with them. I think that is important too, but for the purposes of this, we were really looking to start there because that's who we're highlighting on our website as well.
So I just wanted to be clear on this. So this is not home-based business. If somebody is a massage therapist or psychologist that's pivoted during the pandemic and are now working from home, that's not this. It's more like you said, the brick and mortar downtown, just to be clear on that.
Yeah, mostly. However, it can, it should really encompass all businesses in town, but we already have a process to capture a home-based business. They're supposed to come in and get a development permit. It's when we have, the, the gap has been existing buildings that have a changeover of use. And over time, over the years, we have, we have an up-to-date business listing now, but over the years, we hadn't had that. We didn't have a mechanism, different staff at the WBDC. So we just formalizing this, I think would really help. I think some of this could come in a additional discussion around this bylaw.
I think it would need to be cleared. The members of WBDC are the bricks and mortar businesses. Those are the ones that are paying to be members. So, so that makes sense. I, I don't know that every business, certainly I didn't come for a you may not need a development permit to have a business if you're using a room in your house. So only some people would be.
That's the challenge. Yeah.
So this is the first, this is the first blush, the, those people who are currently paying through their taxes to be members of the WBDC. So that's your focus?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
I guess the word I'm focusing on. I, I guess the word I'm focusing on is traditional businesses because the WBDC does have associate members, um, who are, you know, that, that other category. I'm not sure where this would fall in, um, you know, who pay a fee to be a member and aren't, aren't necessarily registered in Woolfield to be. So I'm just wondering whether the word traditional is limiting us moving forward.
I think it's fine to remove the word. Yeah.
Other questions or comments on this one? So we are looking to move this, right?
Sure. So we're going to leave the word traditional.
No, I think Devin said we take it out.
Okay. So, um, I moved that the committee of the whole provide a positive recommendation to council to continue with pursuing the business licensing bylaw for businesses who are members of the Woolfield Business Development Corporation.
A second please. Thank you, Counselor Ingham. Are there any other comments or questions of council, from council? I can't see your lights because of that.
That's okay. So Counselor McKay.
That's okay. So I just want to clarify. So this is the bricks and mortar, that's fine. So that's just our first step. We can continue to reach out to all of the other businesses in our town and continue to compile lists, but this is just your step one.
Yeah. And just as an example, um, so Tammy, who's the WBDC coordinator, we've been talking about segmenting the business community that exists so that we can bring that type of information to council and others. So we really understand what different areas we have businesses in. But there's also a bit of a value add conversation going on around the office that they have that it would be really nice to know and be able to reach out to home-based businesses so that they could use that office space because it is a professional office space that they wouldn't have access to. It's downtown. So yeah, some of that is, is ongoing, um, but I think it is the logical next step.
Ready? All those in favor of the motion as read, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post that moves forward to council. Now, there are no other motions, but there are some items for discussion. And I guess the next, the next one was the, uh, is that short-term rentals or single room occupancy? Short-term rentals, let's have a discussion on any comments or concerns. There are currently no motions with either of these questions, comments. Counselor McKay?
So we're going to get some feedback from, or guidance from, or both, from the provincial government on short-term rentals. We don't know what that's going to look like. So we'll just hold tight until we get that kind of thing. But yeah, I struggle with short-term rentals because it does add, you know, during the summertime places for people to stay when everything else is sold out, adds income for those who maybe have a cottage and then are gone there and can earn extra income or, or need someone to house sits for the winter and they rent it out and keep care of things and everything works. Also, it's a tough one because it does add to our housing market choices. And I understand that it also causes some challenges for those who, the ends and those other things too. So it's, it's, it's almost like a double edged sword. And I, I honestly have no idea where we land on it right now or where I would land on it right now, but I'm happy to just wait and see what comes down and whatever work you continue and gather information on, I guess would be helpful.
And I would just say, we don't get a ton of complaints about that. We have gotten a few, but they're typically in the R1 zone. Those are the ones that we've gotten. And then the other side of that, that's a bit of a double edged sword as well, because in some ways there's people that are legitimately just trying to use that as an affordability piece for themselves. So, yeah, it's not an easy one.
I have a, a concern and I did, uh, speak very briefly to Director McLean, who I think is listening, um, and he's going to, uh, do some follow-up. But my concern was, uh, in every zone but R1, we allow, like, not sure, we allow, uh, B and Bs that are under just traditional B and Bs that are three or under. So I wondered, and there are a few in town, there are a couple, you know, stones throw from here. Uh, I wondered if they paid a different tax rate, even though they're in a residential zone, were they paying some kind of a commercial tax rate? Director McLean could look that up, but apparently that's up to PVSC. So PVSC, if they knew it was being operated by, as a B and B, and some of them have been here quite a while, so potentially they're being picked up, um, then they be, may be assessed at a higher rate than the person living right next door who might have exactly the same house, but it's not operating a B and B. So I would like us to pursue that. And my reason is it's not fair if Blue Shudders is paying, uh, and they have a sign, they are, they are regular B and B owner occupied. Stella Rose is another one and they're probably, I know the, the one that's on Main Street, I believe it's now closed. But there are others in town and if they are operating in a situation where they are being charged a higher residential tax because of that, then it's not fair for us not to, because they are absolutely no different, except they're called traditional B and B and the others are an Airbnb. So, um, Dirk McLean was going to do some looking at that. And, and I think hopefully the province will consider that as they're going forward as well. Because I do believe that, uh, as, I, I agree with Counselor McKay, they are adding to needed accommodation, but they are also competing with places like the Blommerden Inn and Taddingstone that are paying commercial taxes for the buildings and their operation. And, and, uh, you know, I think we need to make sure we have a level playing field. So I, I'm going to hope that staff will take that comment. And as you go forward on this, try and get some sense. And it may be from talking to PVSC to see how they handle those properties. Any other comments, Counselor McKay?
Yeah. And I think we did talk about that before, and I think it was an interesting conversation because PVSC doesn't actually talk to Canada Revenue Agency, which if they filed a business tax return, those two things should, they should trigger one another, but they don't, which is interesting. So sure, I need to just clarify. So short-term rentals in R1. So if I was gone for a year and rented my house and I live in R1, because I think it happens quite often. That's, that's short-term, that's long-term rental. So that's okay. What constitutes in time, short-term rental?
Twenty-eight days. But the interesting thing about that is I've heard that there's also a market for medium-term rentals now, um, which is, you know, around 30 to 60 days, uh, is what people are telling me. So.
New term. Medium term. And that means what? Yeah. So that means that, but it's still a short-term rental in accordance to, or nothing. It's still not allowed in R1s because it's medium.
I think it would, it would probably.
That's what I'm asking.
It would probably end up being, unless we got to complain about it, I don't know how we would know about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counsel, Counselor Elliott? Um, I think this is a question. Let's see. I can think of a couple of Airbnbs in my end of town that were R1 and were shut down. That's kind of a blanket thing. But I could also think of another one that's on Main Street that is also owner occupied, that seems to function quite well. Quiet. There hasn't been any complaints in the neighborhood. And I'm just wondering if it, if it's owner occupied, if we could look at it differently, then we would, you know, somebody who buys up three houses and rents part of them out and doesn't live there. Does that make any sense, Devin?
Yeah. I would say that is a change to the R1. Which may be a future discussion. Third question? I'm sorry, Devin, did you want to answer?
No, I, I think you answered it. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions on that? Uh, short, not short-term rentals, single, single room, we're moving to single room occupancy. Yeah, that was short-term rental. But this is, right next, we're moving on to single room occupancy. Counselor Butler?
Thank you very much for the very thorough report. I went through it a couple of times, actually. It was a lot. It was a lot. Um, I had a question that was more the survey based, but it sort of fits into this area. See, so the survey was done for landlords, homeowners and tenants. Were there any homeowners that were also landlords?
Yep. And there was one as well in the interviews.
Okay.
So in that, in the surveys, I'd have to look back and see.
I couldn't find an identifying mark for that. So I didn't know if it was just strictly homeowners or if any of them ended up with a, a space in their home that they did rent. So I was kind of looking for those little, with the percentage that was there of households that had rentals. I was thinking there may be a few that might trickle, but I couldn't find any. So I didn't know if there was any way to identify those.
Yeah. In the surveys, there wouldn't be a way because we didn't write the question so that you could identify as one or more as a, as a landlord, tenant or homeowner. In the interview, I did speak to at least one, um, person who was interviewing as a landlord who was also a homeowner. For example, in Woolfield. If that answers your question.
Yeah. And then I did have one more. Just seeing those two, the, or sorry, those three headlines, like landlords, homeowners, tenants, I know that there are sometimes a lot of complaints about, not necessarily the, the landlords, but the property managers. So there is this, there is a difference between someone who is the landlord of the property, they may be absent, but there is a property manager. And I just wondered where, if, if that information was sort of compiled through, or if there was general question. I, I was having trouble finding anything that was property manager direct, if it, if it did come up at all.
Yeah. In some instances, they're referred to as landlord slash and/or property manager, that kind of thing, kind of used interchangeably, depends if, if a landlord has a property manager, you know, who would be the first point of contact? For example, in our database, for example, if we know that a landlord has a property manager, we do ask for that information as well. Again, just for ease of point of contact.
Counselor Ingham?
Yeah, I'm going to sort of talk about like the, um, surveys you did and, and you did a lot of work on that. I can, it was very thorough and, and I did read them quite a few times, um, just because there was so many different opinions. And it's really difficult to sit here when it's 10 to 12 homes that you say are a problem, you know, areas in town. And this is how much work that you have to do on the 10 to 20 homes. That for me as a counselor is, is difficult, right? And then I, the question I had about the, that you put down for the nuisance party, that when you issued a ticket on that, was the question like, most often the answer was, I'm somewhat aware of that. So what were the options on that? And is it like not aware, somewhat aware or definitely aware? Because it seemed like somewhat aware and then is this effective? And the answer was no, most of the time. I have a few other questions or a couple after, if you want to answer that.
Um, if memory serves me correctly, the, um, responses were, I am not aware, somewhat aware, aware. And there was an option for, you know, I have been affected by this. So I have, you know, called to make a complaint for nuisance party bylaw, or I have had compliance show up at my house for that. Um, and then from there, most people were saying, no, it wasn't effective. And that was also reflected in the interviews as well, where there was the opportunity, of course, for a little more context.
They, and did you interview?
Sorry. Did you interview anybody that you know were issued these tickets? Like, you know, it looks like most of the population was 41 to 65. So that leads me to believe that you interviewed landlords and, and residents more than, you know, the, the younger population here. So were there anybody that were issued tickets? And, um, besides the people that you interviewed, like, didn't say in the questionnaire, was that a deterrent? You know, was the ticket a deterrent? You know?
Okay. Um, I'll try to answer these in order and I might forget some things. So just remind me. Was it a deterrent? So that was asked. People were saying, no, it wasn't. And, um, in the survey, some people were, they had the option to say, no, please specify why. And again, people in the, in the interviews, of course, could explain. And generally they were saying people are going to party or do what they want to do anyway, and that they don't have other places to do that. So it's not a deterrent. People were also saying it's not a deterrent because it's not enforced enough. So people think they can get away with, uh, doing so. And I'm sorry, if you could remind me the first part of your question.
Now I don't remember because I'm thinking about, thinking about another one. I'm really sorry. Because I, I was having a hard time focusing on the short-term rentals without dealing with, you know, the issue of, you know, the, um, single occupancy and the issues that we're having up on certain. Yeah. Was it age?
Yeah. It was age.
Yeah. Or any, or anybody that was issued. Yeah. Yeah. There was mostly age. Yeah. Who received the tickets when you were, did any landlords respond that had received tickets and what was their response?
Right. So yes, some did. And, um, you know, some discussed this in the interviews also, you know, after the fact, I sat down with Kaden, the compliance officer, and he was able to, like, together we go through our database and from there I could make a connection and say, oh, this, this landlord has received, um, a ticket or a fine. And for age, um, so I didn't ask the people in the interview, any demographic information. I didn't ask for their age, but we did on the surveys. And, um, so what you'll see there is quite a range of ages that were spoken to. Um, and then there's some other clues you can gain from that because most respondents, 74, I believe it was, of the respondents were tenants. So, but you'll see most of the ages are not that university age that we tend to think of when we think of tenants in Woolfield. And there's other clues in the data as well, like 18 people responded that they are a student, for example. So we do have tenants and a lot of the tenants in the interviews as well were seniors or older as well. So there's a, there's certainly a range.
Do you want me to keep going or?
You have another question.
Okay. I don't want to.
I don't see any other.
So one of the, one of the solutions, like I looked at many people's solutions to ideas. One was briefly, I think Mayor Donovan mentioned about the R1, you know, open that, you know, maybe that'll be a discussion at one point, you know, as we move on. I'm not saying it's now, but it, it possibly could be in the future. So what was the landlord's opinion on like, with these, these, these houses that are, that you recommend, attend, not recommend, but suggest the 10 to 20? Are they large bedrooms? Are they eight bedrooms and they have a big common area? And are landlords willing, or is that an idea that other landlords will seek to have the two and three bedrooms because they might have less problems with that? And, um, you also mentioned that, because it seemed like landlords were not in, in favor of the business, you know, bylaws as, um, going through. But, um, what about, what about asking them to do up like a checklist with the tenants? I, I guess I keep focusing, focusing back on this because it seems like it's such a hot topic and I'm having an issue to try to focus on Airbnbs when we have this issue because they all kind of interconnect because we do have a housing problem, right? And this discussion has, I've lived here since the seventies, so it's, it's been a discussion, right? So how do we move forward, I guess? So, yeah. I don't know if I had a question there or not. Probably didn't. I guess my question would be, did the, are the landlords open to, um, have any association? And they are also open to maybe having a checklist when their tenants come in so they know, you know?
Yeah, certainly. And I mean, one of the things that came out of this was a lot of discussion around having an association for landlords so that there could be a common, um, voice or someone to come and speak to council. Also, that could serve as an opportunity to, to share practices and that sort of thing. There were some landlords in the interviews who do have really, um, you know, a, a great toolkit of practices that they use with their tenants that, you know, that could be something that is shared. And that includes things like sharing information on the nuisance party bylaw and other bylaws as well as just really laying the, the ground for behavioral expectations proactively instead of reactively, for example.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Donovan. I have a question and I apologize if I've missed this in the report, which was an excellent report, but I, I had a lot of information and my question is around Acadia. Because a lot of the short-term rentals are not short-term rental, single room occupants are, um, we need to start with this short. Um, we need to start with this short, need a different acronym. Our students, Acadia students, um, I, I confess, I was shocked by the cost of rooms that were noted in this report and the increase in those costs. It was really quite alarming almost. But apart from that, is there any communication that Acadia, that you know, sends out to students who are either coming for the first time or returning students, that informs them of town bylaws with respect to um, noise, with respect to parking on lawns, all of those things that we spend a lot of time and money addressing as a council? Um, and yet it sounds to me like many of the tenants weren't well-informed. Um, so.
I would think that's problematic, since I know I have every year gone out, and I know Mayor Cantwell did before, and some members of council join us with our staff and knocked on all the doors and handed them the information. So I don't know if that's what you were going to say, but there's not a chance that every house hasn't had a visit from the mayor and the president.
But I, that's a different situation.
That's all about information.
Right. But I guess what I'm thinking of is information that would go out to a new student as part of their enrollment package before they land in Woolfield, because um, I think there are a number of ways Acadia could be proactive in addressing this. Um, and I'm thinking particularly of vehicles and the number of vehicles, just because I witness year to year, an increase in the number of vehicles parked next door to me on both sides that literally sit there for days without being moved. And I think they're just, you know, there's an increase every, every year, it seems. Um, ten years ago, we didn't have that problem. And, you know, we're, we're looking at um, you know, emissions and greening of talent, so many themes around, under which something like this could be addressed by Acadia. I just don't know how proactive or not they have been in before the students. I don't mean the kind of follow-up work, because once they're here with their trucks, they're here with their trucks, right? It's difficult for them to make any alternative plans, but I'm thinking of trying to address the issue before they arrive.
CEO?
Yeah, so I know that in the past, they have. Um, I can't say definitively, I've seen the correspondence, but we've certainly talked about it, and I know some has gone out. I'm uncertain, though, whether that's gone through the ASU or from the KDX. I know the ASU's been involved in a lot of the communication efforts on that file. Um, in the past, there's been a section included in the student handbook related to the bylaws. That was part of that handbook. And as well, the new student orientation, the town was given an opportunity in the past to be part of that. So yes, they were already here at that point, but they were able to come and talk to the town about our bylaws. So that's happened as well. Um, this year, the town was able to actually work with some of the residence advisor staff, as well as staff of the Acts, looking at bourbon, in case I forget anybody, but to also share our bylaws and use them as a conduit to talk to the students and their residents and students that partake at the Acts. So we tried different things. Um, but I do know that Acadia has tried to be proactive. I just haven't seen the correspondence to speak to it directly. But I can certainly follow up and get examples of what they've done.
I see Counselor Elliot, but just to the deputy mayor's comment, interestingly, last week I received a request from three engineering students who are doing a study of parking at, on campus. And the questions were great. They all dealt with parking on campus, but they were coming to the town. So there, there was not an, there was a sense from their questions that somehow the town was responsible for the park, the on-campus parking and some of the questions that you've asked. Um, so I directed them to the Acadia's parking people. But it's interesting that at that third-year level, that there's still not an understanding of what is town and what is Acadia, because this was Acadia parking, not parking for KD students in town. But Counselor Elliot?
Thank you. Um, I think this was the brochure that we went around and put on uh, student front doors. Um, not this year, but the year before. And having gone to a number of those doors and seen the conditions of the properties that were student occupied, um, I have concern about how well they're being maintained and whether the town staff are able to keep an eyeball on this issue. There, there are a lot, if it's, if it's as many as, as numbers have indicated. Um, can we keep on top of it?
I think the report said that we don't have capacity to do that. Is that, am I correct? Or was that just short-term rentals?
Um, so there's different types of inspections that we're doing. So we do life safety inspections. Um, we also have dealt with properties that might have structural issues around decks and different things from a building code perspective. Um, but yeah, there's, there may be other properties that we've never been to. Um, I, I don't dispute that. And to the mayor's point, um, yeah, it becomes a capacity issue. Once you open a file and you start working um, with someone, even from a life safety, really basic fire and life safety perspective. And we can be sometimes handing landlords really substantial, you know, essentially a bill for bringing things up to compliance. Um, so yeah, it's a challenge. It's a challenge with our current complement.
Counselor McKee? Got some questions too. So, um, maybe the place to put the information on our town bylaws, parking, whatever, whatever the topics might be, might be in our MOU, that we work together to put a welcome package together. And that's part of our MOU that we do every single year for every student that comes out. I'm not sure it fits into this maybe, but maybe it fits into that bucket. Um, I'm actually encouraged to say that uh, if someone has parked their vehicle on their, in the parking lot, and it has stayed there, then I would say that's a win. Um, because I mean, if you're a student coming here and you're from New Runway, I would go home at Christmas time, I would need a vehicle to get there, because our transportation system doesn't allow us to go very far. Um, and if it hasn't moved in months, active transportation did well, checkmark, get a good box for us. I like the positive. Um, so those are the two things on that. And for me, I'm not sure that I think, uh, I'm hopeful that a landlord organization would come together, because I'd really like to see what they have to say. I don't know that it is our job to be completely in their business all of the time. What I need to know is, are the bylaws being upheld and are people safe? And other than that, I'm not sure what our role is. So for me, if there was an organization that was done by landlords, I'm assuming somewhere in the room, um, that would be helpful, because we don't really often hear from landlords on what their concerns are too. And if we come together to work together and for the betterment of everyone in our community, that's what I would like to see. Um, I do have a question on short-term, or no, single-room. Uh, in our ones, because those are not solely in the, our threes or our fours now, because we, we have them. Um, there's two actually on, I think there was actually four, but I think there's two now. Two on my, on Grand View now. So, um, which, aside from that first time they moved in and had, you know, clearly had just moved here and did not know the rules. But they've been honestly great neighbors since then. They've not caused any problems. Another one is bought. It's not, it's lovely, like, right there. So is that permitted? But I'm assuming that someone bought that and renting out rooms, and that's just okay? Because it's a single-room occupancy, but it's in an R1.
I'd, I'd have to know the context a little more, but um, yes, there are, you can buy a house and your friends can live there with you. And that, that, yeah, it's a really nuanced sort of people zoning issue that we get into. Um, there's certainly a line there. Um, but I, I'm not aware of ones that are crossing the line. I don't think Marcia has any open files in R1 with that type of issue. I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question, and I think this was a comment that you made, Devon, it might have been Lindsay, and it's about single-room occupancy and it being affordable. And I abide the argument that it, that it could be affordable. Um, I think, I think the deputy mayor's comment, that some of the, some of the rents that are charged to students are, are pretty steep. Students may, for what, because they're taking loans or because they have wealthy parents, may be able to afford it. But I don't think they are affordable. And I expect there's a great need for people who do just, like a single person who does need a single room and who may not have, uh, you know, significant employment, may not have somebody uh, who might be paying or the, or access to a loan for accommodation. And I wonder if, so those are people that are falling through the cracks of our housing opportunities. And I'm, and I'm wondering if you got any sense in anything that you did in terms of who is in single-room occupancies? Are these mostly students? Or are they also those people that, who's, who's, who are housing insecure? But maybe could be more secure if there were single-room occupancies that were affordable. So do you have any sense? Are we mostly in these, the ones that are currently in Woolfield rented to students? Or is there any, is there capacity in our single-room occupancies for those, those people that would fall into a rather precarious financial situation, but would, would like to rent a single room?
I can only really offer some anecdotal comment on that. So there's sort of seems to be two groups that arrive in a single occupancy. And in some instances, it's a group of friends who are attending university, for example, and they want to all live together. There is a second group who are people who can't find anywhere else to go, and they all wind up together. You know, they're moving in at different times. They're not connected to each other, but they often don't have options outside of that. Um, and then I will just offer as well that in the interviews, speaking to some people, seniors, for example, who are finding it that they're just really being squeezed out of Woolfield, they can no longer afford the places they do have. They're seeing that that is the only option remaining that they could afford, but it's not the type of housing that they would choose. But they are finding they have nothing.
So I, so I can understand the first two, a group of friends or a group of university students who are all of a certain age, but what's the likelihood that that three university students and an eighty-year-old woman are going to end up? You know, that it's the eighty-year-old woman that I am concerned about. And I wonder what options we have for for that part of the community. And are they finding accommodation in single-room occupancy? Or are they saying, yeah, I might be able to rent that room, but it's pretty pricey, because I'm not a student with maybe other opportunities, and I just can't live in Woolfield.
Yeah, I think that's the nuances. If I want to stay in Woolfield, I will have to move into a single-room occupancy. So we're seeing some people who are realizing they can no longer afford to stay here.
Thank you. Counselor Ingham?
Yeah, so in your response to, you know, the eighty-year-old woman or male, um, in every zone except for R1, if I, I live in R2, so if I wanted to rent one of my rooms, so just one room to make extra money, I can do that. You can't do that currently in R1. But back, can you? You can?
Yeah, you can absolutely rent a room.
Okay.
It's about creating a separate dwelling unit.
Okay, okay. Just to be clear on that. Okay. So is that becoming more popular? I know when I grew up, we, you know, we would have friends, my dad taught at Academy, we would have friends that, you know, they couldn't find a place, and they, they stayed with us, shared it, you know, kitchen. I don't know what we would have been zoned, probably R1 back then. Um, or if there was even such a thing back in the seventies, I have no idea. Um, but is that becoming more popular for people supplementing their income just to rent out a room um, to students? Because many students, especially international students, probably like the, you know, camaraderie of, of having a family around, right? And even possibly, you know, two bedrooms or whatever. So is that becoming more common?
I can't speak to the conditions locally, but I know it was either the census or a CMHC study that came out this year that said the number one fastest-growing household type is roommate. So people who own a home renting out a room in their, in their unit to help supplement the cost. So that's nationally. I don't know about Woolfield specifically, though.
Well, I mean, you know, younger people can, you know, that are just, you know, finishing university or, you know, trade school or whatever, coming out of high school, they can't afford homes right now. And it's, it's a big issue, right? And I mean, that's where I'm gonna say Airbnb, because I keep trick, tripping over single occupancy and short-term rentals and everything like that. But, you know, in the cities, they have created problems, right? You know, and some of the problems have been, you know, different people coming and going, so you don't know your neighborhoods, you don't feel safe. So there's, there's all sorts of ramifications from that. We're a smaller town. Um, but I can see that that's going to be more and more popular. People are going to rent rooms, especially in our town, the university town, to help, you know?
Deputy Mayor?
Do we have a status on Acadia and their, the new, the additional residences? I understand they're exploring.
Um, no, not really. Uh, the mayor, I know, has done some work. I, I went, I've been to a few meetings recently. Um, and they are looking at options. Yeah, but I'm not sure there's anything more than that.
Did write a letter of support and at NSFM, if you, those of you who were there, recall, there was one of the roundtables was the Department of Advanced Education. And uh, I went, I was the only one who went there, so I had the whole twenty minutes of their time. Uh, I, I didn't get their names, but I have to call to find out who they were. I invited them, and they said they would come. And, and I said, I'd like to talk to you and uh, along with Acadia, because Acadia has expressed an interest in building uh, student residence, but not traditional residence, is something that looks more like a, a home, a townhouse, or even an apartment building that is that is more like a regular place where people who no longer want to live in a student dorm might live. So I'm, and we have had some informal talks about, would that just be for students? Or could be, could it be a mix? Could it be a mix of students and recent graduate students or students and faculty or administrative staff? Or, and if there was space. Uh, so there seems to be an interest on Acadia doing that. I'm looking forward to these people coming down. Um, there isn't currently not a program for universities. There is for colleges, but I believe they are looking at it for universities. That's where that stands. Any? So we have no motions. Are we comfortable with, oh, sorry, Counselor Elliot?
Can I throw one more thing in here about nuisance parties?
Sure.
Okay.
Jermaine to the discussion?
Well, in a broader way, I'm thinking that Acadia has essentially moved parties off campus. Um, and um, I remember being at a party, which probably was homecoming, um, because it was daytime on Westwood, and there were probably two hundred individuals in the backyard. And after the police arrived, one of the students left, and he said to me, if I, if I did this, my landlord would evict me. And I don't know if that happens very often. There's probably, without an association, there's no way of finding out. But do we have any information on Acadia's code of conduct as it is affected by these kinds of events? We don't get any feedback, do we? Erin?
Um, we do. So Kayden and Olivia, who works for Acadia for James Sanford, that's in charge of the code of conduct, do speak quite regularly and on files that are under review by Kayden. There is discussion and follow-up by her through the code of conduct. I can get Kayden to come in and actually give an overview to counsel maybe on sort of some of the stats and the follow-up. Um, yeah, that doesn't really relate to like an eviction, but certainly there's follow-up for those students when there is an incident. Um, and we're able to identify them. Olivia does follow-up under the code.
So I will ask again, there are no motions. Is there, are, are we happy as council that there are no motions that will retain the status quo? Before I close this part out. I'm going, there were a few points, and I'm sure that the minutes will pick those up, but there were a few points of follow-up. Um, I don't think this is a. but there were a few points of follow-up. I don't think this is a finished issue, but it's an ongoing issue. All right, that brings us, and counsel, we do have in 45 minutes a council meeting and supper in between that, but we do have public, a second public input. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak for three minutes? Joe, may just give your name and your address. And I am timing you tonight. Mr. Rafi received a Paul Harris Award at our charter night. This isn't part of your three minutes, that I was fortunate enough to introduce him and give him the award. And then he spoke afterwards and I did have to use the hook. So I did. So three minutes.
From everyone. Anyway, thank you for, I didn't know you were voting on this report so early, but maybe I missed a lot. One thing about, I put a whole bunch of notes together, I gotta try to put everything together. Business owners, not property owners, that's WBDC and taxation. We used to have business occupancy tax for businesses that did not own a building. And that was taken out by the progress and their portion of the taxes they used to pay was passed on to the property owners. So I want you to get away with it. And that's quite, it was quite a bit of money that got passed back to the property owners and they were exempt from it. And the WBDC portion, now the, again, the property owners paid it. I don't believe all businesses are paying it. I could be wrong on that one. Short-term rental taxes competition. You talked about maybe the bed and breakfasts have a competition. I suggest maybe in the peak summer months, people should be able to have, accommodate the new tourism we have, the wine industries, et cetera, to allow everyone, whoever wants to house some of these people, they should be able to do so. I don't believe there are competition to the existing bed and breakfasts. I talked to the gentleman that owns the gingerbread house. They said there's probably 300 bed and breakfasts in town. How many buses are they running back and forth to the wine industry? And we're putting people on the road that are under influence. That's. So basically, I don't think we can discourage the Airbnb or the more accommodations until we have maybe hotels, et cetera, that pay more taxes than maybe can eliminate them. But till then, I think it'll be detrimental to the tourism industry. And we're putting people back on the road to drive to Halifax. This gentleman told me three, you know, the people are calling all hours of the night looking for a place to stay and there is nothing, no bed and breakfasts to accommodate the numbers of people. Certain months, we, you know, around July, August, September, they've got no place to go. They're drank too much and we're putting them back on the road. So we gotta, you know. And for the big homes, breaking them down, I think will probably be one of the best things to control behavior. Smaller apartments give us less trouble. Places that are large, that big living room, big kitchen, they can accommodate a lot of people. So working with, planning to allow landlords to break these homes down, I think is for noise and is a very good thing. So the smaller the common area is the better for large gatherings. So as to the rules of the town and our leases, most landlords have the rules and we tell them about the, we lay the law down. We have a lease now, it's almost a book. When it becomes too much, it becomes, it doesn't, it's not worth giving to them because they won't read it. So we're always educating these students on the rules, on the neighbors, on our properties, demolition, et cetera.
That's your three minutes.
Can I have somebody's two more minutes, please?
You can have one more minute.
Cars, when we tell them about cars, I charge for rentals for parking and they go down from three to two. They leave them home and the cars seem, they disappear. So I think if landlords tell them they're going to charge them, that's a deterrent. And as to rent, what is Steve Brent affordable? Acadia is much more than any landlord I know that's charging students. I'm not sure about the 80-year-olds or the, you know, what the rent should be. And affordability, what is Steve, what's affordable? I mean, if you're looking at, if I was to go to one of these assisted living, I'm paying $2,500 for a room, maybe with a meal a day. Students are paying $6,700 a room and the price of oil just doubled. I can't just put my rent up. Literally, you know, last year I was paying 88 cents, now I'm paying 210.
To wrap up, please, Joe.
Thank you very much and I hope this helps. And thanks for the dialogue and I have to go to Andrea. Thank you.
He has to go what? Do we have somebody else for public input? Come back for counsel. Yes? You have three minutes, you know the drill.
Hi.
Give your name and.
Yeah, Noel McQueen, representative of the Good Neighbors Group. I'd like to, there's so many points, discussion that I'd like to address, but I'm going to try to be specific and address more of the concerns brought up by Counselor Elliott, which was when she was going around and handing out pamphlets to students about, you know, expectations and welcoming to the neighborhood that she was appalled at some of the conditions of some of the student housing. Certainly as good neighbors, one of the things that we want to do is support students in living in housing that at least meets health and safety inspections and fire inspections. And we are all about supporting students to have livable conditions. Devin volunteered that one of the reasons that maybe the housing conditions that the students live in has to do with the fact that we don't have capacity for enough inspections. I'm aware of the fact that on the 17th, you're having a budget meeting. Perhaps one of the things that could be considered in budgeting would be increasing capacity for inspections to make sure that we're supporting our student neighbors so that they're not living in houses that are potentially threatening to their homes. One of the other things, sorry, I need to look this up, is I've got it right here. In the bylaw that you just passed, the business license by law, under nine.
We just passed a motion, we didn't pass a bylaw.
Sorry, passed the, getting my words mixed up, is under nine A inspector, the council made by resolution from time to time, appoint an inspector for the purposes of administering and enforcing provisions of this bylaw.
We haven't passed that. That's a work in progress. I just want to make it clear that we have not passed that.
That's why I'm talking about it now. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I think the words from time to time are my experiences in negotiating contracts is, and when you're negotiating contracts, you would never include the words from time to time. We refer to them as whinge words because they don't actually specify what does and does not need to be done. If we were looking at increasing our capacity for inspections of properties, perhaps that could come under the purview of inspecting businesses as well. We could eliminate that from time to time, whinge word, and say that the businesses will be inspected. We might be able to kill two birds with one stone.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else for public input? And nobody online, I'm assuming?
You're correct.
All right, that brings us to a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Butler. Thank you, Counselor McKay, all in favor and keep saying aye. I posed, we are adjourned. We will be back in just over a half an hour for tonight's council meeting.